Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and if you would all please stand for the pledge of allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the Michigan and to the state for which it stands, two beautiful peninsulas, united by a bridge of steel, where equal opportunity and justice for all is our ideal.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, shippers?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Wolf file?
Here.
Meinhart?
Here.
This time, if we could get an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Wolf file?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, that you say your first name, and then if you would write your name and your address for the clerk, she appreciates that. And if you could limit your time to three minutes, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, Madam Mayor, Don Koschmider, Cadillac, Michigan, like to talk briefly in three minutes or less about the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Act. Licenses are going to be passed out, not passed out, they're going to be issued December of this year. In the meantime, a lot of counties, cities, municipalities, townships are positioning themselves and figuring out where they want to opt in or opt out of this, this law. Big Rapids and Everett are both discussing right now, having, I think they're even at the public hearing stage. You already know about the big Theracan Canadian multimillion dollar company that's going into Kingsley, it already flew by their DDA, and they're having public hearings about it also. The Caldeans from Detroit are coming up, they're taking over all over in Gaylord, they're all over the place. This is a reality that we all really need to look at. Wild Bill's Tobacco is another big shot company that's making moves all over the northern Michigan. I'm all for small business in other places, other provision centers, or growers or processors, secure transporters, safety compliance facilities popping up. I'm just against a big business takeover, and certainly the Canadians up in Kingsley. That'll be all for now.
Thank you.
Terry Harvey, Cadillac. I'll give you a compliment to begin with. I think your board and the people who've worked with the sewer system issue in recent year, year or two, it's long overdue. There's been a lot of people, both on the boards and maybe employees, probably more on the boards, who just held, have held judges over the years, and which made no sense. It's been a waste of money. I'm sure the law firm has been pleased, they've made a lot of money on it, not just yours, but the other side. Harrington do bad, Clam Lake paid for most of theirs. Now we get into the climates. Your six o'clock meetings, which I've talked about before, five thirty county meetings are worse. Your attorney wasn't able to make it on time. I thought two of your employees left early so they could make it on time, but apparently only one left early. And you, you weren't ready to go at six o'clock with a full board, and you're paid to be here. It seems as though you should consider that seven o'clock meeting, a six o'clock meeting basically is a closed meeting, whether you like it or not, it's a closed meeting, most people can't make it. I didn't wash my hands. I don't even apologize for it. You shouldn't have six o'clock meetings. Number two, received a letter today from Marcus. I found working with Marcus to be somewhat polite or cordial. This, I've had a problem with the city going back fifteen, twenty years, where they were in violation of city, or not city, state and federal law. As far as I'm concerned, there have been some crimes committed that would fall under state and federal law. They know about it, you've got people working for you yet. Some sitting in this room tonight, a little set in the lie, Marcus knows about that. We discussed that before, that was unrelated to my situation. That was to somebody else who's taken a shaft from the city. Anyway, I think the board should look into what is going on in the city of Cadillac, and stop wasting time on attorneys. The letter I got today, I don't know if that went before attorney or not, it's a matter of cover your ass, don't admit nothing, that's all I got to say.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and move to the approval of the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, this evening, we just have the minutes from the regular meeting held on May first.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Councilmember Wolf file?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Yes, motion carries. All right, this evening, we have the pleasure of a community spotlight. Marcus, would you like to introduce?
Yes, thank you very much, and if I could also just remind everyone on council to talk into the microphones, I'm not entirely sure what the sound issue might be, but if we point ourselves towards the mic, it should resolve that issue, so I apologize as I will begin to do that as well. So this evening, we're looking at an introduction from, an introduction of the Cadillac Garden Club as a part of our community spotlight. Ms. Essenmacher, if you'd like to step forward, this would be an opportunity to introduce some of the folks that you have, and what you're here to share with us. So, thank you.
I'm Vicki Essenmacher, I'm president of the Cadillac Garden Club, and we are here to present the city of Cadillac with a check for the Sound Garden instruments that are coming, the new ones. Of course, this won't cover it all, but it'll be some lead into it, what else you need, so. These are some more, we have forty members, and it's been since 2003 when the creation of the Sound Garden took place with Frank Youngman and Carol Potter, and we partnered with them, and then we created the gardens that surround those instruments, so.
It's beautiful.
Ladies, do you want to come up here? And who's going to accept the check?
I'd be happy to.
Oh, if you wouldn't mind us getting a picture while that's, and there's a news release.
It's been over fourteen years, then you guys have been involved with that?
Great, since 2003. Carol Potter talked us into it. I don't know, you don't remember Carol, I think you-
I do.
Yeah, you know.
Vicki, where's your phone? You want me to try one with that?
Yes, I do. I don't want to take up too much time.
Where's your big fake chap?
Yeah, we just got the real check.
Yes, it does.
Okay, ladies, come on up here and surround Carla.
Well, if you haven't been down to the Sound Garden area, it just gets more beautiful every single year because of these ladies, and it's absolutely gorgeous.
I love the daffodils down there, first thing in the spring.
Yeah.
Look over here for Nick, too. All right, it's a money shot.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's the shortest community spotlight we've ever had.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
It was one of the best, and it came with a check, thank you so much.
That's the way we like those community spotlights. It's a high bar for the rest.
Okay, so the next thing on our agenda this evening is a public hearing?
Yes, and thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The public hearing this evening is with respect to the approval of a resolution to adopt ordinance 2017-06, establishing the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2018. Owen, if you wanted to just chirp in at this point?
Yep, sure, so this is the final night of the 2018 budget process, the budget will take effect July 1st. We have followed all of our charter requirements, which basically say the council needs to have the budget by April 1st, we need to have a public hearing in the second part of the, after the 10th of the month of April, which we did on April the 17th. We did have the two work sessions on April 3rd and April 17th, those are not required, but that's just an additional opportunity for us to interact, and for public, if they chose to do so, would have the opportunity to provide some input. So on those two occasions, the public hearing in April, and then also some additional opportunity tonight for the members of council, and more specifically even the members of the public to weigh in. The proposed budget has been on our website since that first, right after that first work session, it's been available for public viewing here at City Hall, which we have provided some of that information, and there is no changes based on what has been proposed. The budget does then also authorize the by ordinance, the tax levy rate, our tax millage rate to be levied starting July 1st. The budget is adopted by ordinance, but is allowed to be amended by resolution at any time during the fiscal year by council, and it sets all that out in the, in the budget ordinance. So beyond getting into answering any questions, or the technicalities of what's, what's in the budget, that's the process. We haven't received any input since we last talked in April from, from members of the public, and so we're ready to present it to you, to adopt by ordinance as presented.
I just simply wanted to add right at the end, by the way, thank you, that was a very good summary and wrap-up of the process, similar to what you'll be looking at later this evening, just as sort of an FYI for members of the public and members of the city council, while we establish, you know, through an ordinance, this process comes to an end tonight, certainly throughout the course of the year, adds, moves, or changes, we eventually do need to catch up to them, and as you'll see later on your agenda tonight, there's a host of some amendments to the current fiscal year budget that we'll be asking council to, to approve. And so, it's standard business for, for municipalities to amend even after they approve, and so I just wanted to remind the city council that while we are establishing everything this evening, certainly throughout the course of the year, there will be things that we'll bring back from time to time, and certainly at the end of the year, like we're doing this evening, sort of a roundup, so.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments as it relates to the subject of this hearing.
Talking about the budget, I think that, that you've done wonderful work around the city with different projects, and they look beautiful, but if you would allow medical marijuana facilities, there's a six percent, three percent gross tax on that, and municipalities get 25% of that a year, there's quite a lot of, quite a lot of revenue to be made off having these, and it would be easier budget a little bit, so we wouldn't have to do millages or any other type of shorting our nice projects that we have around here, we could be able to have more, more funds for this, I think. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion, and to the council, if you have any questions or updates?
I believe I do. Anybody else?
I think I'm good.
I think-
We got all our questions answered?
Yeah, very thorough process, I appreciate all the time and effort, not just to create it, but to make it, to present it, and make it understandable to us. Anybody else hearing that, or am I having a stroke?
No.
Okay. Things are turned up, though, a little bit. So, just that, that, thank you, Owen, and the whole, all the staff that works on that, and the time for the meetings to have work sessions on it, I really appreciate that.
Right, and I would, I would second that, the time that you all took, and then all of the department heads to be in, in that room with us for the meetings, to answer all of our questions, and it made a huge difference, so.
I guess I'll jump on the bandwagon, too, Owen, our finance department's always been very professional, the budget you guys put together is always solid and professional, and I know you've been recognized for it year after year, and we're very proud of the work you do, so thank you. So, if no one else has anything, I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance 2017-06, establishing General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2018.
Support.
Councilmember Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf file?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to communications.
Yes, the first request is to approve the display of a banner from May 30th to June 12th, 2017, and the various requested closures on June 10th and 11th for Back to the Bricks, and also to grant the city manager or his designee with the authority to adjust the closures as deemed necessary. In your packets, you had all the paperwork that was submitted for this event, along with a, a one-page kind of bullet list of the requested closures, and then at your seats, you had some more information, specific information about the event.
I do have a question, because I know our first big event out of the gate on the Cadillac Commons project, we closed down the whole commons area. So my question, Marcus, is when a big event like this is going on, is somebody working closely with the businesses along there, making sure that they're number one knowledgeable of everything that's being requested, and what they can anticipate for that weekend?
Yes, this event specifically, being that it's run directly out of the visitors bureau in the DCA, they're all well aware of what's happening, and what the request is for closing of that whole area down to accommodate the Back to the Bricks event this June. And just as a quick side note, it is a different, a slightly different event this year, in the years past, the Saturday activities have been at a dealership located on the north end of our community, and this year, those activities are moving into the downtown core area, so it really is going to create, I think, a nice presence of activity and vehicles, and special, special options for people to get out and about in the community, to enjoy downtown Cadillac.
Good, good, and I see that they are also requesting to use our, our screen and our sound system down there at the pavilion, so it sounds like they may have some stuff, new stuff planned, utilizing the things that we, we installed down there, so that's good.
Great.
Okay, did anybody else have any questions?
No, I appreciate you asking those questions, because we talked about it when we did the Snow Festival, and then there were still some people who said, you know, I really wish we had known that those parking lots were going to be closed that whole time. So I know it's a concern of downtown people.
Yep.
Like, I trust that they're aware of it, and that they would, if they have a concern, that they should have a conversation with us, I guess. If we approve this, it's probably too late, but.
Well, it's not too late, I mean, we'll approve it, but certainly if people have questions between then and now, now and then.
Call the city office.
Yeah, we can work things out.
Yep.
How's that?
Yep.
Sounds good.
I think that's true. Okay, would someone like to make that motion?
I will make a motion to approve the display of a banner from May 30th, 2017, to June 12th, 2017, and the requested closures on June 10th and 11th, 2017, for Back to the Bricks, also to grant the city manager or his designee with the authority to adjust the closures as deemed necessary.
Support. Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf file?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Yes, motion carries.
The next request is from the Cadillac, Cadillac Area Farmers Market, to operate from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM on Tuesdays and Fridays from June 16th to October 31st, 2017, and again, it's in the normal parking lot area.
Make a motion to approve the request from the farmer, Cadillac Farmers Market, to operate on Tuesdays and Fridays from 8:00 to 4:30 from June 16th through October 31st.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Wolf file?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Yes, motion carries.
Last request for the evening is to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM on June 3rd, 2017, for the Life Resources Walk for Life.
I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM on June 3rd, 2017, for the Life Resources Walk for Life.
Support.
Councilmember Wolf file?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council, the first item under the manager's report, bids and recommendation regarding the manhole rehabilitation project. This project is done in order to prolong the life and integrity of the 25 existing manholes that we have by lining them with a new interior coating. Competitive bids were solicited with the recommendation of giving the project to Front Range Environmental, the lowest bidder in an amount of $37,240. Funds are available through the water and sewer fund accordingly, and our utilities director is present this evening. Should there be any specific questions on the nature of the project?
I have a question, we did this last year, too, didn't we?
Correct.
So we just do a portion every year?
Every year, we're doing a portion.
Do you want to come up here, Jeff?
Yeah, microphone, you need the microphone.
Hello, council? Yes, to answer your question, Sherri, we did do the 10 manholes last year, this year we actually bundled this year's 10, and next year's 10, because of the budget year being so close, and we got a bid for 20, and it actually turned out to be 25 manholes. That was cheaper than when we were bidding out 10 each year, so we are saving some money, and what we're doing is, instead of tearing up a street just to repair a manhole, we're repairing that manhole, because a lot of times, the sewer pipe will be good going into that manhole. A lot of our manholes are a little bit aged, and we feel we can get, you know, 20, 30 years out before the road needs to be redone, and when the road needs to be redone, we can do the manholes at that point, so.
Is this the same company that did the work last year?
No, we've done, I think this is our fourth different company, every year, somebody else is a low bidder, every time we've done it, it's been a new low bidder. These guys are out of Illinois, I do believe, I received two calls, I called their references, went and got references from them, and called them, and they were extremely happy with this company, so.
Well, it's interesting, they're all using the same materials?
Yep, there's, there's a little slight variation, everybody has their secret ingredient that they put into the epoxy, or whatever they're using, there is some concrete ones, too, but everybody has their own trademark secret that they put in, but it's basically the same for everybody, so.
Quite a difference in pricing.
Yes, it is, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I always have to ask the question about using a local or statewide company versus out of state.
It's still outs, it's outside of the ability for the in-state to lower their bid to the lowest bid, not by a whole lot, but it is outside.
I was going to say-
What is the percentage, though, that-
I believe it's 1%, given the out-of-state.
When it's state?
Yeah, it's not a, let me go back to that page, it's not, the other lowest bidder is not within the city, the surrounding townships, or our, like, your county-wide area.
Right.
So it would go to high, the lowest threshold, which is the, just the state versus state.
It's just so close.
It's within a couple hundred dollars.
To keep it in Michigan.
And that the low bidder, the in-state low bidder is the fourth time he came in second, unless he's bid it every time, and every time he's coming in second.
Ah.
Every once.
Maybe he'll sharpen that pencil a little bit more next time.
He's about $200 too high this time, when you take the factor in the 1%.
That's a shame.
Rats.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to award the contract for manhole rehabilitation reconstruction to Front Range Environmental in the amount of $37,240.
Support.
Councilmember Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf file?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, the next item is with respect to utility and street improvements. It is for Blodgett Street, the southern half, Garfield Street, East Garfield Street, I should say, and Olive Marble Street, if that's correct, I'm looking at Bruce just to verify. Utilities are also being replaced underneath these areas. Bids were solicited, and the lowest bid came in with CJ's Excavating Inc. out of Cadillac in an amount of $967,814.91. As customary with these types of projects, we do wish to add a 15% contingency for city engineer-approved field changes that may happen with respect to unit quantity or scope due to unknown conditions that could, that could come about, and that would bring the recommended award total to $1,112,987.15, which is actually still underneath our engineer's estimate of $1,122,900. Both Bruce and Jeff are here this evening, should you have any questions, and just as an aside, we do believe, more of a public notice, that the roadwork along Holly Road from Barbara to just east of Wren is scheduled to start hopefully sometime next week, so.
So these projects right here for this fiscal year?
Yes.
So these will be done before?
No, these are for next fiscal year. These, the projects that we're awarding right now, won't be started until after the fiscal year starts.
Oh, do, okay, so after July 1st?
Yep, the first section of streets are supposed to be completed by June 30th.
Okay.
They'll be done this calendar year, but-
Yeah, this calendar year.
So the 2017 utility and street improvements really means this year?
So there's 17, 18.
Sorry, it means this year, yeah.
You know, we're in that budget discussion, so my head's already on 18. I'll make a motion to award the contract for the 2017 utility and street improvement projects to CJ's Excavating of Cadillac, Michigan, in the amount of $900. of Cadillac, Michigan, in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-seven, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-one, one cents, and to approve a fifteen percent contingency, uh, for city engineer-approved field changes in unit quantity or scope, which will bring the total award amount to one million, one hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifteen cents.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf file?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, members of, uh, mayor, members of the city council. The next item under the, uh, city manager's report is a recommendation regarding police protective equipment, and in this instance, specifically, uh, ballistic vests. Uh, ballistic vests, uh, in summary, are, uh, effective for approximately five years. Our vests are currently six years old. Um, the City of Cadillac, uh, has been able to acquire, uh, a, uh, grant, uh, through the Bulletproof Vest Partnership. It is a fifty, uh, fifty matching grant, uh, that does expire at the end of August. Uh, the model vest that the City of Cadillac, uh, is looking to acquire, um, is at a, what's called a threat level two. Uh, it's something that is customly designed essentially to fit the physical bodies, and I'm sorry, I keep looking towards the microphone, uh, but to fit, um, uh, to fit the physical bodies of our, uh, of our officers. Um, two quotations were done, uh, or were received, rather, one through Central Michigan Police Distributors, Inc., the second through Unitex Direct, Inc. The recommendation from the police department this evening is to go with the higher of the two, uh, the one through Central Michigan Police Distributors, Inc., for Armor Express Razor Threat Level Two in an amount of ten thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Note that the net to the city, once the grant is applied, um, is actually under my own administrative spending limit, but it's still greater than that when it's the whole, uh, when it's the whole grant, and that net is five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Funds are available in the general fund, and specific questions regarding, uh, this program and the vests and, and whatnot can be directed certainly to me and/or to Chief Golick, who is, was.
He's there.
Is there. There he is. Sorry, you were getting blocked a second ago.
Yeah, for me, you know, the obvious question is, is, other than the fact that it's a Michigan company, what's the desire of going with the, um, Central Michigan group?
Um, it's more about the comfort and design of the armor, and certainly, uh, the chief could perhaps provide more concise points on that. Um, it's something that's written, uh, written, something that is, uh, worn by our personnel for twelve hours at a time, uh, and they are somewhat rightly so, perhaps particular on how it fits and feels. I'm not sure if you would like to add a little more, but.
Yeah, I think you started to hit it right on the head there. So, uh, members of council, when we're talking about personal protective equipment like this, this is something, um, it doesn't wear like a T-shirt. It can, there's a completely different levels of companies are all over the board out there. This is something that we've tested that the officers want and desire, um, because they feel that they're gonna be the most comfortable and the most effective. But also, um, poorly fitting armor and some poor armor designs, um, will restrict motion, and that becomes very problematic as you sit in patrol cars, you sit at a desk, as you stand and you run and you do certain things, uh, the armor, it can be affected. This seems to be the most pliable and, uh, the most versatile one, so we've kind of focused in on it. Um, we have a really longstanding history with Central Michigan, uh, equipment a, as well, police equipment, and, um, and this, uh, particular vest actually is manufactured in northern Michigan as well, so.
So that was a question that I had earlier today, um, was that, um, the Armor Express vest, um, is actually distributed through a, a lot of different companies, and, um, I wondered if, if we had taken the opportunity, you know, once we landed on, that's the vest we want, if we had taken the opportunity to, um, try and see if another distributor could beat Central Michigan.
I couldn't find any other distributors in Michigan. I could certainly reach out across the board, but as I reached out, they all are selling different, uh, different products. So when I tried to get more Michigan distributors that we typically deal with, um, they were not able to compare apples to apples. They were gonna sell their own armor line, so all these different distributors have different relationships with manufacturers and such. So it was, uh, I couldn't really do that. I mean, I might be able to reach out to another company that's selling it elsewhere, but I, I kind of kept it to Michigan because of our relationships with all the different distributors, the guarantee that when they say that we'll have something by a certain date, that we know we will.
You guys, the, the current vests you were wearing at the Department of Armor Express, aren't they?
I don't think they are, uh.
Seems like Armor Express, we've had those in the past. Maybe not the, the last.
Right, I'm trying to remember exactly what the last ones were, and I, I, I haven't, uh, done the history on it, but, um, I think that they're, um, they're not Armor Express, they're Armor something else. It's a different, yeah.
But you looked at.
The one with the Armadillo logo, if I recall.
Now you're stumping me too here, so, anyway, but you looked at both of these vests, and you, you clearly thought that the Armor Express vest was.
Yeah, I looked actually, uh, more than that, too. We, we were actually, we're gonna go with Armor Express, uh, different model prior to the Gen Two, the Razor coming out, when they recently came out with its Gen Two, and then, which was supposed to be their better one, but we kind of found a different model prior was still better. This Gen Two is, is, it's a pretty superior product, so.
Um, I also want to mention, uh, great job on the fifty percent matching grant.
Thanks, that was, uh, that was nice to get that in. We've been a little, um, tied up wanting to kind of lock our personnel in a little bit. Before we've made, pushed on the purchase, we're there, so we're ready to push ahead, and obviously now I'm up against a timeline.
Right.
So wasn't doing that intentionally. That was something I was trying to do literally to save money.
That actually closes the gap, too, of the difference in what it's gonna cost the city, you know, put that in there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, uh, if we don't have any further discussion, I'll, uh, make a motion to award the purchase of fifteen bulletproof vests to Central Michigan Police Distributors Incorporated at a cost of ten thousand, four sixty. Anticipated grants, funds were reduced to net cost to an estimated five thousand, two thirty.
May I interrupt?
Yes.
That is a perfect motion, but we first need a motion to waive bidding.
Oh, okay, okay, let me back up. Let me make a, a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding the purchase of fifteen bulletproof vests.
Support.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf file?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, thank you. Um, motion carries.
Want me to restate my entire motion?
You.
I will. I'll make a motion to award the purchase of fifteen bulletproof vests to Central Michigan Police Distributors Incorporated at a cost of ten thousand, four sixty. Anticipated grant funds were reduced to net cost to an estimated two, five thousand, two thirty.
Support.
Councilmember Wolf file?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, uh, mayor and members of the city council. Uh, the final item under the city manager's report, um, this evening is, uh, utility agreement update, and this is perhaps, uh, I shouldn't say perhaps, this has been several years in the making. Um, and I'm very happy to provide this update tonight and advise, um, that we have provided, uh, the, uh, Lake Mitchell Sewer Authority, uh, or LMSA for short, uh, with, uh, an updated, uh, agreement, a new agreement for the provision of sanitary sewer services, uh, for the geographic area in which, uh, they are responsible for providing services to. That area, uh, is within the townships of, uh, Clam Lake, Cherry Grove, and Selma. Three of the four, uh, surrounding townships around the city's limits. Um, we have provided, again, in, in the public, um, uh, in the public packet this evening, a copy of what was submitted to, uh, the committee that we've been meeting with now, uh, for the last several months, uh, along with the transmittal letters, uh, requesting that they, uh, execute the document accordingly and get it back to us by the end of June. I do see that there is a member, uh, from that committee, Mr. Hilty, here, uh, this evening with us. Bob, how are you?
How are you?
Uh, very good, thank you. Um, and unless there are any other questions, uh, with respect to this update, um, there is no action for the council to take this evening. Uh, hopefully, we'll have, um, uh, an executed copy back soon, and we can, uh, bring it back for a city council, uh, consideration and execution as well, um, later next month, or shortly thereafter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to know that it's moving forward. Moving in the right direction.
Yeah, it is, yep.
At the last minute, but it's moving.
It's been inching along for a while.
Oh, yeah.
It is. It's, it's moving forward, and, and as the, the letter in the packet, uh, that everyone has, that's publicly available, mentions, um, uh, we'll, you know, we're looking at getting this back and executed by the end of next month. Obviously, we'll likely bring it forward in July or thereafter, depending upon when we get this back, but hopefully, we'll be able to get it back in time to do it yet in June. Um, and then everything would be retroactive to the, uh, first date of when the contract would start, which would be, I think, May fourteenth, yeah.
It'd be good if we could get it
So.
back because we don't have a meeting the first week in July.
Um, the next item, mayor and members of the city council, uh, under adoption of ordinances and resolutions, uh, is what I had referenced earlier when our finance director, um, was, uh, giving us, uh, an update on the general appropriations ordinance. Uh, we do have before you, uh, several amendments, uh, and God bless you. Owen, if you would please, um, walk us through them, that'd be great.
Sure, I'll go very quickly. Um, the first fund that we'll talk about is the general fund, and just a reflection that there are some additional revenues coming in, most significantly, the additional PPT reimbursement that we received this year. It looks like when all special millages are, uh, transferred and captures taken into account, that will be about two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Uh, the federal grants are, and the additional grant for the, uh, vests purchased that we just approved, and contributions from private sources are from a couple of things. These are some of the, uh, the things that we get in, like the garden clubs check and, uh, the money, um, for the sound garden, the money for the dog park that has come in throughout the year, and then later on, when we get into the expenditure side, you'll see where we're, uh, appropriating some funds for the purchases of those various designated private contributions essentially. And the clerk treasurer, just a slight, uh, this was more significant last year, so we're glad to see some of this reimbursement of prior property tax revenues as, as part of tax tribunal settlements, uh, is down this year somewhat, but it is still over the twenty thousand dollars that's currently appropriated, so we need about three thousand more dollars for that. Police department and their operating supplies, uh, two things. Uh, first is the grant portion of the purchase of vests. Uh, we're covering our share from funds that are already appropriated, uh, but we did increase that for, to account for the portion of it that's grant-funded. Uh, that's fifty-five hundred, and then twenty-five hundred, we received a special contribution early in the year. That's, that's part of that, uh, contributions from private sources line, and so we're, we're, um, increasing the appropriation for operating supplies to be able to utilize that money in the current fiscal year. The fire department, uh, same thing. They actually received two special gifts, uh, and a, a matching twenty-five hundred from the same organization that gave to the police department, and then a, a local, uh, church raised some funds. Um, weren't sure how much we were gonna get. As it turned out, it was, it was like ninety-five hundred dollars, uh, that that church raised and donated to the fire department, and, uh, part of what, yeah, it was great news. Part of what they, um, wanted to designate that for, uh, as they were talking with, uh, with our fire staff, was the cancer reduction initiative, and so we're gonna be able to put in, uh, some washers and uniform dryers, all of this to, to be able to really quickly get rid of all of the, um, the contaminated material that may have landed on their, on their turnout gear, and so that, that should be able to go in here in a, in a brief amount of time, but again, using donated funds to do that, so that was really good news. In the economic development, this is where we account for a lot of the special projects like sound garden, uh, dog park expenses. These are things that we really didn't know about as of budget time, and they, they kind of don't fit anywhere else, um, directly, and so we'd have this special projects line that we've used for a number of years. So this is where the, the cost of the new musical equipment, the cost of the, um, the, the shelter that they're building at the dog park and those things. That's what this appropriation is for, really for designated funds that are given or that we've had on hand. Um, like the fire safety trailer, we still have some money on hand for that, and that's where those expenditures will be appropriated to. Uh, just provided a quick summary for the general fund. At the beginning of the year, we had anticipated using about thirty-nine thousand dollars in fund balance to, to balance the budget, and at this point, it looks like we'll be, uh, well into the black, uh, at the end of the year. Again, primarily because of the personal property tax reimbursement. The major and local street fund, the next one, the next three or four are actually related to bonds that we issued in August, and the first payment is due. So, uh, as of budget process last year, uh, those, those bonds weren't authorized, approved, or, or issued, um, but they are now, and we need to make a payment, so this appropriates the funds, uh, and both the major street and the local street have funds, uh, on hand to be able to, uh, to make those contributions. We just need to simply, uh, appropriate a transfer out. We have a s, a special fund where we account for debt service, so you'll see that on the next page. So they're transferring out an equal amount. Um, the DDA is covering part of that as well, as you're aware of. They already had had some appropriation, uh, for that, so they didn't need to make one. The two thousand sixteen Geo Bonds Debt Service Fund, that's where you'll see all the transfers in, um, and then the principal and interest expenses will be appropriated there. The Building Inspection Fund, uh, this is one that should have been in the budget process a year ago, but that would have been the first budget process, and, um, frankly, it was just overlooked as part of the budgeting process a year ago. So we just need to clean that up and get the funds appropriated, and this is based on current projections of where that activity will end the year. It's at about ninety-two thousand dollars right now, and so we anticipate some more coming in. So really, it's just a revenue and a matching expenditure appropriation. The expenditure is a little less because we have this small markup that we keep, uh, on hand to, to account for the administration of that. We did provide some statistics on where our building activity has been in the last, uh, quarterly financial update that I think council received last Friday, so that would be some interesting numbers for you to see if you're wondering kind of what the source of some of that is. Page four, uh, the Rotary Park Project Fund. Again, these were funds that were all appropriated in a prior year, but the, the project trickled into this year, um, and so it's just a, kind of a transfer of the appropriation essentially from last year to this year. Um, and, uh, the expenditures, I wanted to point out, it, the, this will leave about ten thousand dollars in there to do the final things, like the, the screens, which we've had some challenge getting quotes on even, and I have another vendor that's currently working on it. What's that?
The kites?
The sun shades, yeah, yeah, that's what I meant, not the screens. In the revenue on the Rotary Park Project, you see the transfer in of a hundred and forty thousand. That's from the Capital Projects Fund, which is the next line in the amendment. We had originally approved the last year, the utilization of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and based on raising some additional funds in the patronicity campaign, uh, and, um, that was primarily the reason we, we were able to utilize less of that, so those funds will be still available to be used on a, on a future project. And then the Building Authority Operating Fund, this is where the costs of, of managing the DEQ rent, uh, um, are accounted for, and we've just simply had some, some major repairs over there, one of which, I think about sixteen thousand, the council had to, to take act- over there, one of which, I think about 16,000, the council had to, to take action to approve on a major HVAC repair. We've had to repair the, the mobile, not mobile, but the, the smaller cooling unit for the server room and some other things. So that's just to appropriate those funds. The revenues are still covering even the additional amount of maintenance for this year. So we're, we're good on revenue on that. We just needed a little additional appropriation for those costs. That's it. Happy to answer any questions you have. Went through that pretty quick.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution amending General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2017 as presented.
Support. Councilmember Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The second item is a request to adopt Resolution Numbers One, Two, and Three regarding a public parking lot special assessment and to set the public hearing for June 5th, your next city council meeting accordingly. This is the item that I brought up for information purposes at the last city council meeting. At this city council meeting, the council has three resolutions before it for consideration in a general summary way. The first resolution establishes essentially the area of the special assessment and refers to the dialogue commencing with the city council on the, on the, on the special assessment itself. The second resolution refers to the city manager's report on it, which is actually an exhibit, Exhibit A within your packet, identifying the area and the estimated cost for the, for the maintenance of the assessment. And then the third resolution establishes the setting of the public hearing, which would then trigger the notification to all of the people or businesses, properties, I should say, that are affected by the special assessment, informing them of the hearing itself. This is, this is not a new process for our community. We have done this now for quite a number of years. This is the first time this board has seen it, however, in the last five years since we're now ending the current five-year assessment that is in place. It was important to the, the DDA and the Downtown Development Authority and the Business Improvement District that we try to keep this on the roll or keep the roll active so that there is no difference necessarily in seeing this line item on tax bills. And so with the process established with the schedule that we have in front of us, Owen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this would keep this line item on the summer tax bill. Is that correct?
That's correct, yep. It allows it to, the timing to be still levied in July.
Right. John Wallace, our Community Development Director, and I and Owen facilitated the conversations with the Business Improvement District Board, which again is, is the same composition of the Downtown Development Authority. There is a copy of the roll in the packet, although it's a small one for you to look at, but it is available online as well. At the public hearing, as we do with, with most of our public hearings, we'll have a more of a presentation talking about the methodology that has been recommended by, by the BID in moving this forward. So the action that council needs to take tonight is in triplicate, it's approval of, of the three resolutions, the third of which sets the public hearing for June 15, or excuse me, for June 5th, 2017.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Numbers One, Two, and Three regarding public parking lot special assessment and to set a public hearing for June 5th, 2017.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins? Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening we do have the minutes and reports of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning Commission that we can just peruse on our own time. And at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment. Again, if you would please limit your time to three minutes or less.
Don Koschmeyer, Cadillac, Michigan. Again, I would beg this honorable board to set the public hearing, whether, whether or not we want these facilities in our municipality here, medical marijuana growers, processors, secure transporters, provision centers, and safety compliance facilities. Other municipalities and cities are doing this right now. They're already having it at the public hearing. Big Rapids just had one a week or so ago, and they had people from both sides expressing their views, although the police were there and said they don't care what word you put in front of marijuana, medical or magical, it's still associated with deviance. So I took offense to that myself personally. But there are public hearings in Kingsley, whether they want a big $20 million facility from Canada, they're going to build in there in Grand Traverse County. Evert is looking at these facilities right now. They're having public hearings. I don't know why this good and decent honorable board is dragging their feet on this, or if somebody's threatening you or blackmailing you. But there, there are so many wonderful positives that I could, I could throw out here, but I couldn't do it all in three minutes. But God bless you all for your service. Thank you so much. But we need to, we need to look at some of these other issues besides the projects that we're working on right now, too. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment. Does anyone have anything for good of the order this evening?
I do. I'm glad you're here tonight, Jeff. I was stopped by a citizen, Ron Benniger. Said it was okay to use his name. And he apparently had a sewer line issue, a backup, a plug, or whatever, and he called in private contractors, and they determined that the problem was out in the street, and it was the city's infrastructure. He stated that he had contacted you, worked with you, and then Brian Cardinal. And he stated the crew came out the next day. I believe he said Dunbar's came with him to open up the street. And he couldn't have said more praises about how your crew was out there, worked all day, didn't take a break, worked late into the evening to resolve the issue. And he just said they were great guys, they were very professional, they did an outstanding job, but he just wanted me to know about it. He's also going to send a letter regarding that to you and to the city manager. But kudos to your crew. Apparently, they went out there, they took care of the issue, and he was very, very impressed, so.
Nice. Always good to get compliments. I've got a few things. One, I think it was at our last meeting, Dave Gregg was here with some current concerns about the building department and the changes that we made a year or so ago. And I'm wondering if maybe we could have an update from the city's perspective on how that's going, and any other complaints that have been lodged or how they've been dealt with. I know I was, I'm friends with some people who are doing a large building project on their home, and they expressed some concern to me also at the time. And I, you know, I made, I said to them, make sure you let me know if it become, is problematic. And I never heard back from them, so I'm assuming things went okay after that. But I, I would like to, you know, we, we said we would monitor it, and I'd like to report on that. Secondly, I'm wondering if there is a timeline, a date in the near horizon, hopefully, that we were going, we'll see the, the donor plaques put up at the pavilion. Do you know what I'm talking about when I say that?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
Again, feedback from people is just saying, you know, it's not up yet, it's not done yet. And it would probably be in our best untrust to do that sooner than later, especially if we're looking at other projects that we want, might want to ask people to help fund the, yeah, we need to move forward with that as soon as we can. Thank you. No, I, I went home from work a little bit early today because I had a 7:00 AM appointment this morning, a Monday. That was too much for me. And so I had time to read my mail, and there was a really nice article in the Michigan Municipal League's Review Magazine that John Wallace wrote about the community commons and the lessons that we've learned and all of that. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that article was there and to look for it. And thank you for putting that in there.
May I ask, what, which edition of the magazine?
Just came out today.
Okay. I don't, John, I don't have that yet, so.
It was in my mail today.
I just got mine today.
Did you? Yeah, we have, we have not seen it here in the office.
Yep, and there's a little article, a nice picture of you, and there's pictures from the gala event at the league conference. Some really interesting articles about tourism and the economic effect of tourism on the state. And then they picked different regions of the state and wrote nice articles about. It was a good, good magazine, all in all. Yep.
Nice.
Thank you.
Well, last week, I guess a week, a couple of weeks ago, the youth council did Project Sticker Shock, and you went along with that. And did we have sheriff person with this?
Um, we did not.
We did not. But
But Officer Rourke was with.
Officer Rourke came along and was with. I wasn't able to attend, so the mayor went with the kids, along with Cindy Tomaszewski, who is our JC's representative and helps a lot with the youth council. And youth council's meeting again this Wednesday, for anyone who is interested, at 4:00 here in this, these chambers. Then, what else? Oh, there is a, there's a concert, the symphony concert is Saturday night. Please support our local Cadillac Symphony.
I did have one other thing. If I may, oh, in the lobby area there, you'll see different essays and pictures on the wall from the Arbor Day Celebration. And did we talk about these last time? I'm sorry if we did.
We didn't.
Okay. But anyway, it was, it was, we had a really nice ceremony here. I got to act as Mayor Pro Tem in the mayor's absence because she wasn't available that evening and, or that afternoon, and got to meet all of the kids who were award recipients. And they were very disappointed that the mayor wasn't here. I tried my darndest to fill in.
I appreciate you doing that.
I frankly had sticker shock, or it's something. I was like caught in the headlights because I didn't know I had to have my picture taken with every one of them. But it was a really, really nice event. And, you know, how proud we can be of being a tree city and to be a tree city as long as we have. But one little girl in particular gave me this picture, which I accepted and took home because it's lovely picture of a tree. And it was the other day when I looked at it, and it says right here, "To Mrs. Philkins."
Awesome.
Easy come, easy go.
It is beautiful. Well, thank you. And thank you for standing in for me.
It was really my pleasure.
Great.
I just wanted to let everyone know that the mayor's Fit City Challenge III kicked off this morning with a 6:00 AM walk down by the lake.
It's way too early for me.
It's cold this morning.
It was 33 degrees. It was, it was invigorating. So this, this challenge is going to be bigger than, better than the challenge, the challenges before. We're going to run from May 15th through September 15th. And we've got some terrific partners that are coming up alongside of us. I did a wellness fair last week at the hospital, and Priority Health was there for our benefits signup. And they are so into this. And so they want to sponsor it for, for Cadillac. And also Munson Healthcare was there, their wellness team was there. And so they're going to promote us on their Intranet page, Internet and Intranet page, because they think this is really wonderful. So I'm pretty excited. We took a, we decided that, we haven't had a logo for this event, and since it continues to grow, we wanted to have our own logo. So I thought it would be fun last week at the wellness fair to let the people that were there, because we couldn't decide, so we let them vote. So I think we've got it. So that'll be coming out, and we'll have shirts and doing a lot of new things. Nine and 10 News is going to work with us, and we're going to do a live show with them. And we're going to have a kite flying event out on the lawn of their new building. So that'll be something pretty spectacular. So, so those are the types of things that are coming. And we want to be more focused on families and children's events so that we get more people out, like scavenger hunts and, and, you know, the kite flying. So just get people out and get active. So. And then there's one other thing. I wanted to say, the police department took the initiative out front of the building. I don't know if you guys noticed all of that when you walked in today. It's beautiful. They did the landscaping out there, and those guys did it for us.
Oh, nice.
So, thank you.
The Wexford County Collaborative Meeting?
Oh, yes. Last week, we had the collaborative meeting that we set up for all the elected officials in Wexford County to come together. Networks Northwest was there, AES was there. And they split us into like five groups to talk about infrastructure, to talk about housing, to talk about recreation, economic development. And we had some really great conversations. We didn't have anybody from the county there, but we did have people from Manton, and we had people from Mises there. And we had a lot of community leaders there.
And there was a county planning commissioner.
Oh, yes, road commission.
And a planning.
And a planning commission. Al Cooper from the road commission was there, too. And so we had a lot of community leaders there. We had some investors in the room that care about and are excited about all of the things that are going on in Cadillac. And so Sarah and Marcus and I had the opportunity to kind of have a wrap-up-the-session call last Friday. And so what we want to do is to invite all of those very same people, everybody that we invited in all of the townships and the county, and to come back together. And then what we'd like to do is set up sessions, say for instance, and I asked for this one to be first, that we all come together and we just all talk about housing. And so, you know, what role can everyone play? And then after that, you know, a month out or so, we'll schedule another meeting, and we'll talk about recreation. But we'll hit on all of those subtopics that we split into groups for, and now we'll bring everybody around the same table to talk about the same topic. So I think that, I was excited by the energy in the room.
Yes.
And I don't think that we've ever done anything like that before. So encourage, you know, the county commissioners that you know, the people out in the townships that you know, encourage them to come and sit at the table with us and, and talk about those things. I think that will help. Yes. Anybody else? Okay. If not, we have to go into closed session this evening.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of pursuant to MCL 15, excuse me, 15 dot 268A, to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager, who's a public officer and employee, at his written request, and to invite Todd Kiway, Human Resources Generalist, to join us.
Support.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Go back into open session.
Support.
Councilmember Wolf File?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Yes, motion carries. Okay.
Um, well, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council, uh, for the time, uh, in the closed session to discuss my, uh, periodic annual review. Uh, I certainly appreciate the feedback, um, that was provided, uh, by the board and our discussion. Um, at this time, um, I would appreciate if the city council would, uh, consider, uh, looking at my base rate of pay and adjusting it, uh, as the city council may determine fit. Um, uh, based upon, uh, some data, um, that's available that shows, uh, the current regional average, um, uh, that also, um, happens to just coincidentally correlate to, uh, the base rate of pay, uh, uh, from, uh, my predecessor. I certainly would consider anything the city council would be willing to discuss uh, with respect to making that adjustment, to bring me essentially back into the fray of the regional average. Uh, but certainly understand if council has ideas or concepts as well, so thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing the request in front of us, and, you know, I think it should be known that the council collectively feels that Marcus has been doing a very good job, and it's really nice from my perspective to work with a council that had, um, collectively seized the value in the city manager, and all of our scores on the evaluations were fairly similar. They weren't, we didn't, we didn't have a lot of variance between them, so we didn't have any outliers, if you will, they were all in the same area, and in fact, the scores were similar to how the city manager evaluated himself. To one hundredth of a point. That's how similar they were, I just thought that was pretty amazing, the average scores. Um, and so, and, and taking a look at the request for an increase for his salary, I, I think it's a legitimate request, and appreciate, um, Todd Kiway's research in looking at what the average salaries are, base salaries for city managers in our region, and we can, so we have data in front of us, and we can take a look at the, the population of those municipalities and what the base salary is. And it does show that we have been paying our city manager, um, at a lower rate than what is the average by quite a bit. I think, you know, there's a few other things for us to look at, and that is, um, the rates that other city employees have received, the rate increases over the past few years, you know, we've done a really good job of trying to keep the reins on a tight budget with reduced revenues over the years. And, um, so everybody has felt it. All the staff haven't gotten an increase every year. So, I, I just wanted to lay that out there, as maybe some, uh, some framework for us to start to have a conversation that, um, I personally would like to see an increase. I don't think that moving the city manager up to, all the way up to a point where it might be the average for the area is in everyone's best interest at this point, unfortunately, but I would like to see us move him as much as possible in towards that, and then we'll look at it again in future years. If we had gone back in time and given him a two percent increase over the, you know, since he's been here, that would have been a different story, but we didn't, and, um, so we have to weigh how much of an increase we're gonna give him now versus where we want him to be eventually with his cohort. And what's fair for the rest of the staff, and, and what we can afford.
Well, the one thing, you know, and what you were saying, um, there, there have been times when staff didn't take an increase, uh, but there were times when staff did get an increase where the city manager, looking at the records, did not take an increase or get an increase. And, um, yeah, I think it should be said for the record that it currently, at this stage of the game, he's about, uh, eleven percent behind where the, our last city manager was when he left us eight years ago, so uh, he's, he's quite a ways down there, and in the comparables in this region, um, he's at like third highest or third from the top in the years of service to his community, but he's second from the bottom in, in the average wage, so I agree that we need to do something, um, he hasn't been, uh, you know, given annual increases every year, uh, like maybe should have happened, I agree with you, so at this point, I think we need to do something to start getting him back where he needs to be, he's done a, a very good job, incredible job for us, and, um, but you're right, we gotta figure out what we can afford, and I think incrementally, uh, we need to have a goal to get him to that, at least to that average wage, or, or where he would like to be, uh, per his request, and what we could do this year, I guess, is what we need to determine tonight, where, what we can do, how far we can go.
Um, I appreciate all of the work that went behind this, um, and I absolutely echo, um, what councilmember, um, Spelman and, um, Wolfile have said. I, you know, it's, I've been sitting in this chair three and a half years now, and, um, you know, as, as a group of individuals who work with Marcus on a regular basis, um, you know, we've, we've provided a, an environment for him to go out and show us what he could do. Um, we encouraged that leadership, and we still encourage it, and, um, I think that this is probably, uh, Ben Marcus's strongest year, and, um, you know, he never fails in communication, and he never fails to prepare us for what we need to know ahead of time. And I, and I think that, um, we do need to do something for him. I think that the eleven percent is quite a leap, and I, I don't think that it would be appropriate for, for many reasons. Um, but I would like to ask this council to consider everything that we do think that we can do.
I'm gonna throw a number out there if that's all right with council.
That'd be great.
And then we can go from there. Um, given everything that we know, and, um, that we don't have to do everything overnight, um. His current salary is at ninety-one, his base salary, ninety-one, eight-five-eight, and because he hasn't seen increases over the last few years, I'd like to consider a five percent increase. Which would take it to approximately ninety-six thousand four hundred and fifty. So I'll make that a motion to increase the base salary of the city manager by five percent.
What was the, uh, what was the number, Sharon, sorry?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, four-five-oh. You can do some math, I don't, you know, make sure it's right.
Yeah.
But, um. So there's a motion out there, in case anybody wants to second it, so that we can have some discussion about it.
I'll second it, so that we can have some discussion about it.
Okay. Well, I guess my, my thought would be, if we, if we looked at, at doing a five, I certainly think it's earned. I think it would get him a little closer to where he probably should be, but I would hope that, uh, if that were the decision we came to tonight, that, you know, next year we look at this again, and over the course of, uh, the next few years, two or three. Two would be great for him, if we could get him up to where he probably should be, and comparable to all of, um, you know, the communities that we're using, uh, as a guide here. But I do agree, maybe eleven percent jump might be an awful lot to do at one time, but I certainly would hope that if we do something tonight, then we're uh, very proactive at doing something again next year, and, and the following year, if necessary, to get him where he should be. So, because we have a good manager, we wanna keep him.
That's true.
And if we don't pay him what he's worth, uh, someone else is gonna come along and take him away from us, then we'll be starting from scratch, so, and I'd, I would hate to see that happen.
How are you feeling, John? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
I was debating between around five or six. And we'll at least get around halfway anyway, of what, definitely eleven percent.
And I kinda, I, I kinda lean t- more towards the six than the five. Um, you know, he's asking for eleven percent. We know we can't go all of the way there this year, and, you know, next year it, you know, councils change, and so, um, Marcus is gonna continue doing the, the good things that he's doing, but I think that, um, you know, we as a council know what he's worth. And if we can grab the six, I would prefer that.
I would prefer that as well. You got numbers for that, don't you, Councilmember Spelman?
Uh, six percent would take us to ninety-seven, three-six-nine.
And it's still below what everybody else is getting.
It is.
Well, it's not that big of a jump.
Right, I feel more comfortable with five.
You do?
Yeah, I, I do.
For, for what reason? Can you explain for me, please? For me?
Well, for, I guess for a lot of the same reason that we have, um, tried to keep our expenses as low as possible as we've moved forward, cause our, I mean, we got lucky because we've got an influx of revenue this year, but we haven't always been that lucky, and we've been taking money out of the general fund to balance the budget, um. You know, Marcus is doing a great job now, but he hasn't had the full support of, uh, of all of the council, you know, every year, and, and I wanna see him continue to do well and give him the support that he needs, and I would love to look at this again next year.
Are we in a position this year financially?
Hmm, that's the difference.
It'd be easier to do the six now and maybe a smaller percentage next year. Like you said, in the past, you know, there've been issues financially, you know, but, uh, if we're in a little better shape this year, maybe this is the year we look at doing the added one percent. So next year, depending on what happens, like you said, councils change and, uh, economy changes, and maybe next year we have to go with a smaller percentage, if we can afford to do it this year, I'd like to see us be able to do as much as we can.
And the difference between, um, according to my calculator, I won't say my math, cause that would put it immediately at question. Um, the difference between five percent and six percent is about nine hundred dollars. So it isn't like bank breaking?
Yeah, actually, uh, it's gonna be more than that, that's not, yeah, that's not a huge amount.
So we would need to vote on Sherry's motion.
Okay.
Well, Sherry, I, I understand, I, I understand your concerns, and I appreciate them, and you've been here, you know, a long time in council and all that, um, and I think, you know, you're, you're conscious about the financial end of all of this, and I appreciate that. But I guess I'd like to see if it's a matter of nine hundred dollars, if we can afford it, and we could see our way clear to do a six this year, then next year we wouldn't have to go as far, depending on what the conditions are at that point, so. It's just my thought.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, that, oh, good discussion.
As you said earlier today, we don't, we work well together, we don't always need to agree with one another.
I just appreciate all the support, sorry I've been sitting here not talking, which is not usual for me.
Well, that is not normal for you.
Yes.
He's about ready to blast off that chair.
No, 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 it's all good, I mean, I appreciate everyone's support, so it's all positive conversation, so thank you.
Okay.
So we should have a vote on that motion.
So we're gonna have to, um, take a roll call on Sherry's motion.
Yeah, because there was a motion and support, so we'll take a roll call on Sherry. Councilmember Meinhart?
No.
Shippers?
No.
Spelman?
Yes.
Wolfile?
No.
Mayor Filkins?
No.
Can I, can I just interject?
Yes.
Can we just round those numbers off to?
Yes.
Cause otherwise, I could draft it any way you want, but it just, it, the, when you, when you base it on percentages, you get strange numbers like, like, uh,
Eighteen dollars.
Ninety-seven, three-sixty-eight, ninety-five cents, or something like that, and it's just.
So I suppose you wanna round it up?
Well, I'll, I'll let the council decide.
No, you round it, in the contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're just gonna go with the six percent.
Okay, so at, at six percent, um, it would be what, um, I wanna make sure I got this right.
Yeah, this is rounded here, see, I'm using a rounded number to come up with my figures, that's why our numbers are different.
You need the.
It's eight, five, seven, fifty.
Point five.
Times one point oh-six equals.
That's ninety-seven, three-sixty-eight, and ninety-five cents.
Exactly.
So how about ninety-seven, three-seventy?
What'd you, what'd you come up with?
Ninety-seven, three-seventy would round it up to.
Three-sixty-nine.
Three-sixty-nine. And nine dollars, it's.
That's what we're gonna go for.
Okay, so, so you're gonna round it to the dollar at sixty-nine?
Oh, go with seventy.
Go with seventy.
Seventy.
Okay, ninety-seven, three-seventy, then.
Yes.
Okay, that.
It's one more dollar.
Well, I gotta think about this. Let's put the string on it.
Okay. So, would someone like to make that motion?
All right, I'll make a motion, uh, to increase the, uh, manager's wage to a base amount of ninety-seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars.
Support.
Sandy, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolfile?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. And with that, we could adjourn the meeting?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.